Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting in order today. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance from, with help from the Girl Scout troop 63738 and Captain's Gal pack 842. Let me just make sure that we're clear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, in the face of all and liberty and justice for all.
Good day. Thank you very much. Now, could we pause for a minute for the former pledges to those who we lost in the past year? So, I'm up here today as Bob was making it, and I'm not a moderator, and so we're hoping we get a moderator like this here when we get done. But I'm gonna start the meeting now. This meeting, we're gonna follow the rough rules for what we do, and we'd ask you, when you need to speak, to stand up, to be recognized, and a microphone will be distributed around for the people to speak, so everybody can hear you, so we can keep everybody in the loop on what's going on. Before I get started, a little warning, I'd like to say, as most of you know, our town clerk is retiring this year. She's had a good run with the town, the board really appreciated all her help, she's always looking out for the town, not just her job, so we'd like to recognize her. And...
Thank you for the last time you extended your run. I have good help in my office that helped me make it easy, and thank you all.
Well, I'll read the official warning to get us started. This is the warning for the town Sheldon Annual Meeting, Tuesday, March 4, 2025. The legal voters of the town Sheldon tomorrow are hereby warned and notified to meet at Sheldon Elementary School, 78 North Barrow, Sheldon Springs, Vermont, on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. to transact the following business. Article 1, elect the following town officers as required by law. A, a moderator for a one-year term. B, a town clerk for three years. C, a town treasurer for three years. D, a select board member for three years, voted by ballot. E, a select board member for two years, by ballot. F, a select board member for one year, remaining of a three-year term, by ballot. G, a library trustee for five years. H, a library trustee for one year, remaining of a five-year term. I, a liquid tax collector for one year. Article 2, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint the town clerk as provided in 17 BSA 2651E. Article 3, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint the town treasurer as provided in 17 BSA 2651F. 4, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint the liquid tax collector as provided in 17 BSA 2651D. Article 5, to act upon the reports of the town officers. Article 6, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to collect current taxes pursuant to 32 BSA 4791. Article 7, shall the voters authorize total expenditures for general and highway run operating expenses of $1,801,627, of which $1,458,631, under raised by taxes. Article 8, shall the voters authorize expenses not to exceed $89,000 from the remaining federal funds to be used for an initial payment on a lease agreement for the new fire item. Article 9, shall the voters authorize construction of a new storage facility on the town garage property at the total expense not to exceed $100,000 we finance over a period not to exceed five years. Article 10, shall the voters authorize the select board to pay an $11.48 parcel on which Sheldon Elementary School is located, the Northern Mountain Valley Union United School District, as described in the memorandum of understanding between the town and the school district. Article 11, to discuss any other non-mining business dated at Sheldon, Vermont, January 28th, or 29th, 2025, by the town legislature. All right, we'll get right started here. Article 1, elect the following town officer as required by law. A, a moderator for one year.
I'd like to nominate Rebecca Jacobs.
All right, we have one nomination, Rebecca Jacobs. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations?
I second Rebecca Jacobs.
Okay, we have a nominee, we have a second nominee. Seeing no other nominations, we have the clerk pass one ballot for Rebecca Jacobs. All those in favor? Oh, all right, Rebecca Jacobs, take over.
Can you hear me almost right now, please leave it here? Okay, our outgoing moderator wanted to pass along his gratitude for his support over the past several years of doing this. Obviously, he's not here, he's down in Florida listening to family, enjoying his grandkids. Down there, since the year he decided that it was time for him to start doing those things, but he wanted to pass along his, again, his gratitude to the town for his support. And congratulations, Rebecca.
Well, thank you, Nick. Can you hear me okay? All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Rebecca Jacobs. Before we jump right back in, I'll just say, thank you all. Bob, when you ran this by me, I said, sure, I'll give it a try. I am really going to be a novice at this, not quite the expert that Bob is and Robert is from the rules, but I would do my best, so, um, let's jump in with Article 2. Oh, Article 1, excuse me. To elect the following town officers as required by law, a town clerk for three years. Nominations are now open.
I would like to nominate Jane Lanza.
Jane Lanza has been nominated. Any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations for town clerk? Seeing none, we will close the nominations for the position of town clerk for three years. All right, all those in favor of Jane Lanza for town clerk for three years, please signify by saying a "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. I will ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Jane Lanza for town clerk. Congratulations, Jane. All right, Jane, would you like to come on up? To elect the following town officers required by law, a town treasurer for three years. Do I have any nominations for town treasurer? Pardon me, do we have one for you? Sir?
Nominate Jane.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jane Lanza for town treasurer for three years. Do we have any other nominations? All right. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will close the nominations for town clerk for a position of three years. And having said that, without objection, I will ask for all those in favor of Jane Lanza as treasurer to please say...
Is it possible to re-lead the responsibilities so they're all to ensure my qualifications?
Absolutely, provided we have those. If someone has their own responsibility...
I'm familiar with the quick folks, so keeping that matter certain, if I need help, I very much appreciate your motivation. I want to ensure I put it out.
So, just up here, we've got Jane's asking for the duties.
Okay, okay, I'm good, thank you. Okay, okay. I accept one.
Okay, all those in favor of Jane Lanza for town treasurer for three years, please signify by saying a "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes silent. I will ask the clerk to cast one vote for Jane Lanza for town treasurer for a position of three years. Article 1D, a select board member for three years, with five ballots.
As long as the clerk passes the ballot.
Okay, all right, so nominations open for 1D, a select board member for three years.
I nominate Brian Derry.
All right, thank you, sir, we have a nomination for Brian Derry.
Which position is that?
This is for 1D, a select board member for three years.
I'll nominate Rick Piazzi.
All right, Rick, what's the last name?
Piazzi.
Piazzi, all right, thank you. So, we have Brian Derry and Rick Piazzi. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. All right, gentlemen, if you'd like to, we have an opportunity for each of you to take a moment and say a few words regarding your nomination. Mr. Derry, would you like to start with you?
I've been on...
Let's get the house just a moment, please, if you would.
I've been on the board pretty recently in years past, but the only thing I gotta say is, like, whoever gets on the board, immediately be at the meetings, like, and at the meetings, and there's a wait for a call, it's like, time is right, and then when I take a position, I pursue to be on time and be present.
Thank you. And Rick, what's your name?
I'm Mia Gumbet, I've been on the select board for three years now, and I enjoy the work, and hope to get another three.
So, thank you, Rick. Do we have any other nominations? All right, so you're going to see the votes. All right, if your last name begins with A through K, please head to this side of the table. Everyone else, please head to this side, and we will pass the votes. Thank you, everyone, all right? The votes are in, we had a total of 59 votes cast. Fifteen for Brian Derry, and we had forty-four for Rick Piazzi. Rick has the votes for the select board member for three years. Moving on to Article 1E, a select board member for two years. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Marie Davidson.
All right, we have a nomination for Marie Davidson. Do we have any other nominees? Do we have any other nominees? Seeing none, we will close the nominations for a select board member for two years. And having said that, all... Someone wants to make a motion for the clerk to cast one ballot. All right, thank you very much. Do we have a second? Thank you, Abby. All right, I will now ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Maria Davidson for the position of select board member for two years. Congratulations. All right, moving on to Article 1F, a select board member for one year remaining of a three-year term.
I nominate Greg Stevens.
All right, we have a nomination for Greg Stevens. Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amy Jenkins.
All right, and we have a nomination for Amy Jenkins. Current, we have nominations for Greg Stevens and Amy Jenkins. Do we have any other nominations? If not, I'd like to give each an opportunity to speak. Greg, if you're here?
I'm here.
Excellent, Greg.
Thank you. There was a vacancy in the board.
Can you, can y'all hear?
There was a vacancy in the board, and I was called to accept, and the board declined, and so I'm back. I've been a board member before for, I don't know, twenty-five years, so, I guess I, just to finish up the term, one more year.
Thank you. Greg, Amy?
Thank you. Oh, around the side, buddy?
Yes, just down the left.
Good morning, Amy Jenkins. I've lived here in Sheldon about fifteen years now, my husband's from this area. We have two young kids here at Sheldon. I am part of the Sheldon MTO, and I've been a board member for, I think, about five years now, so, just, you know, putting my name in the ring, and I appreciate your vote, thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. If we have no other nominations, we will close the nominations, and we will move into voting. So, same process, if your last name begins with A through K, A through K, please come up, and again, you're casting a vote for a select board for one year remaining, three year term, and we have Greg Stevens and Amy Jenkins. Hello, folks, can I get your attention, please? We're gonna have to ask a little bit of favor from all of you. The number of votes cast did not match up to the checks in the book, and it was too close, otherwise, so we are going to ask for a re-vote on this. What I will ask is, when you get to the front of your line, please pause and make sure that the, whoever's checking on your side of the table, the list of voters, gets your name before you proceed to put your vote in the ballot box. So, again, I'm gonna ask everyone to recast their ballots, and again, this is for a select board member for one year remaining of a three-year term, for Greg Stevens and Amy Jenkins, A through K to my right, L through Z to my left. Thank you. The votes are in for Article 1F, a select board member for one year remaining of a three-year term. There were sixty-two ballots cast. Greg Stevens received a total of thirty-two votes, Amy Jenkins, a total of thirty votes. Greg has the nomination for a select board member for the one year remaining of a three-year term. Moving on to Article 1D, a library trustee for five years. Are there any nominations? Yes?
I nominate Maria Davidson.
All right, we have a nomination for Maria Davidson. Do we have any other nominees? Well, please, we have some validity in question. The question we're asking is if someone can be a select board and a trustee. Okay, what we're hearing up here is, we do not believe that is a conflict of interest, it will be checked, but so as of now, that still gives us one nominee for library trustee for five years of Maria Davidson. Do we have any other nominees? Seeing none, all in favor of Maria Davidson for library trustee for a term of five years, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, I will ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Maria Davidson for a library trustee for five years. Moving on to Article 1H, a library trustee for one year remaining of a five-year term. Do we have any nominees?
I nominate Brenda Stanley, and she's not present at this time.
All right, Brenda, I'm sorry, what was last name?
Stanley.
Stanley, thank you. Do we have any other nominees?
Yeah, I nominate Jess Draper.
Jess Draper. All right, we have Brenda Stanley and Jess Draper. Do we have any other nominees? Seeing none, we will close the nominations. You mentioned Brenda is not here, Jess, or Jess...
She is not here.
She is not here, okay. Then, at this time, we will close the nominations and proceed to voting. All right, once again, we are going A through the...
Can I nominate Amy Jenkins?
You bet. We can reopen without any, aren't any conflict there, we can reopen a new I, A, B, C. So, we have Jess Draper, Amy Jenkins, and Brenda Stanley. Amy, um, Amy, is here? Amy, do you have to say anything to this? Good morning, so, I've heard you before for this select board, and happy to put my name in for the library trustee position. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. All right, I wanna make sure we have an opportunity. Any other nominations at this time? If not, we will close the nominations, and ask you all to come up to cast your ballot. Again, please make sure to check in, provide your name before you vote. A through, last name, A through K to my right. We have Jess, Draper, Brenda Stanley, and Amy Jenkins. All right, folks, so the votes are in for Article 1H, a library trustee for one year remaining on a five-year term. There were fifty votes cast. Jess Draper received six votes, Brenda Sterling received eight votes, and Amy Jenkins received a total of thirty-six votes. Congratulations to Amy. And, moving on, to Article 1I, to elect a delinquent tax collector for the term of one year. Do we have any nominations?
Jane.
Right, we have Jane Lanza nominated. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominees? Seeing none, all in favor of Jane Lanza as delinquent tax collector for one year, please sit by by my left. All opposed, nay. It appears the A's have it. Jane Lanza will be the delinquent tax collector. Congratulations, Jane. Got lots of stuff to do. Okay. All right, moving on to Article 2. Shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint the town clerk as provided in 17 BSA 2651E? Does anyone wish to move this article? The motion has been moved for the voters to authorize the select board to appoint the town clerk. Do we have anyone who can second that? Abby, you want to second it then? Yes, is there any discussion on Article 2? Um, back there? And we have a vote going down, and we can...
Could we just hear how that would affect the election that we just did?
Excellent, yes, so, I'd like to speak to that. Or Matt?
All right, so, yes, it would, it would affect the election that we just had, okay? So, the, if, with any office that may be eliminated by the statute, if the town votes to eliminate the office, then the person holding that office will continue to serve for forty-five days, and then after that position will go, will become appointed. Okay, so, if, if you vote yes on this question, that means that you are asking the select board to appoint the town clerk, and the town clerk that we just elected would be out of office within forty-five days. Okay, if you vote no, then you will accept the town clerk that we just elected, you know, for the full three-year term, and the select board will not be given the power to appoint. Okay, and that essentially goes for the Articles 3 and 4, as well as Article 2. Okay, so, it's the same provision of law, it's just a different, for each, different statutes for each position, but in each case, if you vote yes, you're asking the select board to appoint, and in forty-five days, the incumbent, happens to be the same person now, would be out of office unless the select board would appoint someone. If you're voting no, you are choosing to keep the town clerk or treasurer or delinquent tax collector that you just elected for the full term. Is that a question?
So, just so I'm clear, a yes vote would enable the select board to post the job open, and then the elected incumbent for the election that we just had could then apply for the job, and allow them to put that wherever the applicant's mayor may not be?
That is correct. So, right now, because the town clerk is an elected position, the only people who are eligible to be town clerk in the town Sheldon are voters in the town, meaning, are voters in residence of the town Sheldon. If the select board is given the power to appoint a town clerk, they may appoint anyone that they choose who is qualified. And also, the other thing about it in an elected position is that it's a statutory position right now, so that the town clerk and treasurer and the tax collector have, because they are a statutory office, they, they serve at the will of the voters, whereas, if the select board is given the power to appoint those officers, they then have, the select board would have direct authority over those officers, and could dismiss them for cause, all right? Not for any reason, but for cause, under the, under the provisions of the Appointing Statute. Okay, so, to reiterate, if you, if you, if you approve, if you say, if the town votes yes on this article, that means that the select board will, will give you, give them the power to appoint town clerk, the town clerk we've just elected will cease in the office within forty-five days, they may apply to the select board to be permanently appointed, but also, anyone else may apply, and the select board, I assume, will have a formal hiring process, the way you would for a typical job, that's not an appointment, not an elected position. Okay?
Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion on Article 2? Yes, um, do you want, do we have a member from, from right from the left? Can we combine Articles 2, 3, and 4 to be on the one, the same proposal? Yes. Yep, that would be, that would be in order. That would require a motion to do so, but yes, that can be done.
I move that we combine Articles 2, 3, and 4.
So we have a motion to provide Articles 2, 3, and 4 to have a secondment? Is there any discussion on that? Brian?
Is this to be done by ballot or voice vote?
This is by voice vote.
If there are more than six people here who think we should do it by ballot, they should stand?
So it does look like... It looks like we will be doing this by paper ballot. Okay? Alright. Yes, and we will continue to have the discussion, so Jane will pass first, and then I will go around her. So Jane, um, could you grab it up?
If you just clarify, is this to combine the three as one decision? Or is it saying we want to do all three as one decision?
The question was, um, are you asking to clarify what the motion is?
The motion was made to combine the three, and then we now decided to go to a vote. So is this just to combine these three articles as a question?
Yes, that was the question I'm getting currently, is to, shall we combine Articles 2, 3, and 4? I think it's the first, and then by now.
Are you asking by the a first, the last, for this question to be open?
For this question at hand about combining those, if we can do that by voice vote. So let's start with that question. Are we comfortable with, um, the motion to combine Articles 2, 3, and 4? Are we comfortable with proceeding with that as a voice vote? Okay, all opposed? So it looks like we can combine, move forward with, um, the motion to combine Articles 2, 3, and 4. Are there, is there any further discussion on that motion? So seeing none, so then we can go into a voice vote on that. Alright, so all in favor of combining Articles 2, 3, and 4, please signify with a aye.
Aye.
All opposing? The motion has passed to combine Articles 2, 3, and 4. Okay, so what we're going to do at this time is I'm going to just read through Articles 2, 3, and 4 since we're now looking at those as elected. And, um, this allows, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town clerk, um, the town treasurer, and the delinquent tax collector? So voting yes, affirmative, would say yes again, you want the town clerk, or excuse me, the select board to appoint those positions. Similar to what Matt said, that would mean in forty-five days, they're going to go through a process to select someone. Voting no or opposed means that we'd like to stick with the votes that we have passed here today, and the, um, selected representatives for town clerk, treasurer, and delinquent tax collector would remain as voted earlier today. Do we have any discussion on this combined article? Brian?
How is this going to work, and here's the cover.
How it is working, here's the cover.
Once, so under the provisions of the statute that allow the town to choose to appoint, or excuse me, allow the town to choose to have the select board appoint these officers, that provision remains in, in, in effect until the town has a subsequent vote and a subsequent town meeting to go back to electing those positions. So very similarly, a few, a few years, in the last few years, we have voted in this town to eliminate certain offices, districts, and auditors. Those are remaining in effect permanently until the town votes to have elected officers, those elected officers again. So if you are voting yes on this question, you are saying we want to change it from elected positions to having the select board appoint positions, and that will remain in effect until a subsequent town meeting where the town will vote on this question again and could possibly go back to having the positions elected. Okay, is everyone understanding that?
Start in the back, um, here's a lot of people, please.
Matt, the chair. Uh, Matt, can you just, or people that might not understand what value there may be to appointing a town clerk versus electing a town clerk, are you sort of operating on for people more? Because I think probably just, um, people that may not understand, probably the office situation.
Alright, I can, I can, uh, this is just speaking for informational purposes, it's not my personal opinion, um, but, uh, so right now, as I said, the, the only people who are eligible to be town officers are the town Sheldon, including the town clerk, the treasurer, and the delinquent tax collector. The only people who are eligible to do those jobs, or be elected to do those jobs, are residents and voters of the town Sheldon. Alright, so, and since those are statutory positions, those people serve at the pleasure of voters only, okay? Uh, there's no provision for the select board to really have any oversight over them, or have any, uh, the only qualifications they have to show is that they are voters and residents of the town Sheldon. So, uh, for a town treasurer, for example, you know, they don't have to prove or show up, other than an argument to voters, they don't have to demonstrate, uh, any particular qualifications with regard to, you know, financial acumen or anything like that. If it goes to becoming an appointed position by the select board, then the, the, um, authority over these positions would transfer from the voters directly over to the select board. The select board would have the ability to hire whomever they wanted. Again, it would not have to be someone who is a resident or voter of the town Sheldon, it could be, uh, anyone, and they could speculate the qualifications that they require for someone to serve in those, in those roles. So it would be much more like a conventional, uh, job application process that we would all be familiar with in a, in a private sector type of. And also, the process by which, you know, I was hired as a town administrator. You would, the select board would come up with the qualifications they would look for, they would post the job, they would get applications from various people, the select board would be able to consider the qualifications of those people and have negotiations with them about, uh, you know, their position and what they could be doing, and then they could make decisions on that. Now, again, once the town clerk or treasurer was appointed by the select board, they would have oversight over them, but they would not be able to remove them from office for any reason. They would have to do so for cause under, so for certain reasons that are listed in the statute. Okay, but also, the person appointed would not be appointed for any particular term. Right now, in our elected system, we have a town clerk or, or treasurer for three years, and then we have another election. If it goes to being an appointed position, select, again, they serve at the pleasure of the select board. Um, when someone decides they don't want to be a town clerk anymore, then the select board would appoint a new one. Or if the select board has cause to move the, the person, they would find, they would again have another. And that could be many years if someone remained the town clerk or treasurer. Okay, so I hope that answers your question, Matt.
Alright, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Um, another consideration, whether it's something that people are in favor of or not, which is something to be aware of, is that, you know, if you look at town meeting day over the years, you know, the school meeting is gone now, uh, other positions have been eliminated through these votes. So the continuing of eliminating positions at town meeting day gives less and less, you know, of a vote for the people that show up here, the reason to show up here to make these decisions for their town. And whatever your, your position is on that, or you know, argument of, well, it's on the select board, we decide on you, it's just, uh, something to be aware of for you to make that vote, is that over time, there's been less and less, you know, these town meetings have taken less time, it's been less community time. Um, so it's just, wherever that falls on your, you know, spectrum of importance, it's just something to be aware of.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, I know you would ask, so this is you next, if you'd like, and then Brian will come over to you.
Hi, Sheldon community. My name is Jane Lanza, probably figured that out through this meeting so far. And I'm grateful for those of you who have asked me to step up to this role, or encouraged me, or supported me. Um, I was not looking for this position, um, but it sort of found me. And I want to begin by thinking Kim, for everything she's done for Sheldon, and me personally, and whoever is fortunate enough to be her successor, is going to have her help and death's help in being the choose for the town Sheldon, so that I'd like to echo that gratitude. As a member of this community, I've met all kinds of people, and I know we don't always see eye to eye, and I'm comfortable with that. What's important is that the town clerk remains neutral, welcoming, and allows everyone to feel respected. My aim would be to treat every interaction with kindness, professionalism, and an open mind, no matter who walks through the door, as that's the oath I just took. At the heart of it, I do care deeply about Sheldon, and it's more than where I live. This is a resilient community of neighbors, families, and friends. While we might not always agree on everything, and that's okay. A strong community depends on people who are willing to listen to one another, who are willing to work hard and to find solutions that can benefit everyone. I work and live in Sheldon as a parent, I'm a business owner here, I'm a farm operator here, and I have a unique perspective and skills that align with this role's needs. At our family-run farm, we embrace the Vermont way, which is driven by science and technology, but crafted by hand and grounded. And as we care for our land and kids, I'm dedicated to guaranteeing for our community. I'm not attached to this position, but I will be very honored to take it as I'm at a point in my business and parenting where I can now step up to this role. I'm very comfortable with regulation from a highly regulated industry, red tape, business, efficiency through technology, streamlined operations, and this regular old labor been filed into. If you do consider me as your town clerk for the next three years, I promise to help you file important records, register to vote, obtain your licenses, research your history in a simple, accessible, and respectful way, as that's what this position demands, regardless if you see eye to eye. My work is focused on serving our town best and the people who live here. So for those of you who have been super supportive and open and considering and really cherish you, and whatever happens, I fully trust in it without attachment to the citizens. I'd be honored to serve Sheldon with respect.
Brian?
We can end up with the same deal Fairfax has got nowadays with their town clerk. They're having enough fun with that, and being a taxpayer, we're going to lose the right to vote for whoever we want.
I would love to keep the power to the people. I'm not saying, I think there's a slut man, but I don't want a slut man for whatever reason that's upset with the town clerk, or they say, okay, if you don't, you know, whatever. Like Brian said, Fairfax, the town clerk, whatever she did, the slut man got upset, and they wanted her to leave, and she fought and lost, of course. I don't, I think we should keep the power to the people and not change it to win. If we had nobody running, nobody running, if you had, you guys would do the job. But we don't have, we have somebody, and I think we got this quick lady here. Keep the power to the people.
Thank you. Steve?
So, I just want to let everybody know that, um, coming up on town meeting, we didn't know if we had any running. We knew Kim was going to retire. Didn't have, didn't know whether someone was going to fill her position or not. And so that was a big part of the reason that we put these articles in there, in the morning. Because if nobody would step up and run for the position, then, you know, what do we do? If we didn't have the authority to appoint somebody, if we had the authority to appoint somebody, but it hadn't been a Sheldon resident, and if a Sheldon resident hadn't stepped up to run for that position, then wouldn't there be anybody interested? So that was a big part of this, of putting these articles in there, in my opinion.
Thank you for that, Steve. Do we have any further discussion on the combined Articles 2 through 4? Here again, um, all in favor of accepting Articles, oh, 2 through 4? Oh, yes, okay, so we will revisit the question of whether we want to do this by voice vote or paper ballot. Are there at least... Okay, we will uphold our plan and vote on this by paper ballot. So, folks, and let's just to be, to reiterate, on Articles 2 through 4, voting yes authorizes the select board to take over filling this position. Voting no will uphold the ballot cast earlier for those positions. Okay, so at this time, again, we'll ask A P K, last name A P K, am I right? Please make sure to check in. Summarizing the votes on Articles 2 through 4, um, we had a total of sixty-two votes, um, one of which was a spoiled vote, fourteen votes for yes, forty-seven for no. So the articles have been rejected and given the power of the votes with the people Sheldon. Moving on to Article 5. Article 5, to act upon the reports of the town officers. Alright, we have a motion to accept the reports. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on Article 5? Brian?
On, on page eight, is this, uh, signatures of the town meeting day, last year?
That does look like what it appears to be. Would somebody from the town clerk here, or is the select board like to confirm? That appears to be what we are looking at. The signatures from last year's minutes of the twenty twenty-four town meeting.
On, on what date did you sign that?
It appears that the date is wrong, yes. Be signing before the meeting actually happened, right?
But that's what it says in the book, correct?
So it's a, I get to type, I'll type it.
What is the correct date?
When was town meeting yesterday?
No, mark it in.
Yeah, we signed for that.
What we're hearing is it sounds like this is the select board meeting that came after the town meeting. So it does sound like it's the dollars, that's the wrong date on there, so that was not signed back on the day of twenty-nine. Do we have any other discussion?
What is the correct date?
We have to look at it.
We have to get, it sounded like the next select board meeting after town meeting, um, so Tuesday following that, or Monday, excuse me, tomorrow, so we're looking at it.
I said I can tell you that's my signature on there, I'm just not sure when the exact date was. But I know it was at the town meeting. Somebody put their own date on there, so.
Do we have anyone else that feels like they'd like to take on them?
So Brian, I, I think what, I think what happens is that typically when taking the minutes to the meeting, the court has used the morning. So use the, you know, when we do the, when we do the town report, you know, you've got word document that has the morning in it and then you just take that word document and you type the minutes into it. And so, yeah, right. So it actually, yeah, and on the bottom of the minutes is the agenda draft minutes completed March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. So I don't know if that's the date on which the minutes were signed, but that gives you an indication of when they were completed and they were signed after that date. So it wasn't March eleventh, it was probably in whatever select board meeting, March eleventh was held, but after that.
The second Tuesday, the second Monday in March was March eleventh, which was the first Monday after last year's town meeting on March fifth. Would have had a normal meeting day, that's when it would have been signed. Yes.
So it sounds like we're getting into the March eleven is the date that should be indicated for the signatures on page eight. Good catch. Do we have any other discussion on article five, to add to follow course of the town?
Last year we had, what is it, one point two million dollars and due to others, where, who did that go to?
What was the question, can you repeat? Yeah, can we get a microphone? Okay, right here.
Last year we had?
What page, Brian? Is it last year's?
And, and it's like due to others from funds is one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand nine oh seven sixteen. Where did that money go? Cause if you show them this year, you're really on seven hundred thousand bucks. From December thirty-first to January first?
Brian, the due to fronts are the other accounts, whether you, the water, the sewer, the restoration, the construction, the highway equipment, those are all your due to fronts. The totals of those equal that line, due to front.
Is it, is it in the general fund, general checking account or in the funds?
It's in a general checking account.
So there's, there is, there's no money in the funds?
Yes, they're due to, those funds are set up in that general fund. We have fund accounting now, it's not like when you did it, we worked at separate checkbooks. It's all in one account earning interest with those due tos are the fund accounts.
Last year there didn't really go interest?
Well, this year it did.
Look at the number.
Look at, look at here, twenty twenty-four, see what the interest was.
The highway equipment, there was an interest on that?
It's all in one account now. The funds do not have to make an interest. They have to be set, the money has to be set aside in a fund.
We have another question up front here, if you would like passing the microphone along this way. Okay. All right, we have a motion to move the question. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. This is that second, okay. The question again is article five to act upon the reports of the town officers. All in favor of ending the debate, debate, moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, we are closing the discussion and we'll move to a vote on article five, to act upon the town reports of the officers. All those in favor of accepting article five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. And article five is passed to act upon the reports of the town officers. Thank you. Article six, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to collect current taxes pursuant to thirty-two VSA forty-seven ninety-one? So moved, do we have a second? Excellent, thank you. Article six is open for discussion. Do we have any discussion on article six? Here again, all those in favor of accepting article six, which would authorize the town treasurer to collect current taxes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it and article six is passed. Article seven, shall the voters authorize total expenditures for general highway fund operating expenses of one million eight hundred one thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars, of which one million four hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars shall be raised by taxes? Does anyone wish to move this? Thank you. Do we have a second, Abby? Thank you. Three, article seven is open for discussion, please. So we have any questions on article seven? John?
Thank you, I'd just like to take a second, you'll notice in the article, the Sheldon Food Shelves gets a request to some money from the town. Food shelves had their operations in early nineteen ninety, so we're about thirty-plus years in operating. We have never asked the town for money before. And two reasons for that, number one, when we first started back thirty years ago, the operation was really very minimal and between donations and what the church could provide, we would fund. As the operation got bigger and bigger, we got some funding from United Way. But when the pandemic hit, the United Way's whole strategy and funding process got totally messed up because like they couldn't do, they just didn't get fundraised. And so we lost our United Way funding. And one of the reasons we lost our United Way funding was because we had so much low cost and no cost food available through the food bank and we were getting so many donations, private donations, that we could get our hands on all the food we could give away and we couldn't even spend all the donations that we had. When the pandemic ended and a lot of those funding sources had gone away and our needs, our access to the food shelf has continued to grow. Before the pandemic, we were serving about a hundred families a month. When the pandemic hit, it jumped to two hundred. This month, for the last several months now, for almost the last year, you're typically serving between three hundred and fifty and four hundred families. Between a thousand and four hundred people come to my food shelf every month to get food. We move between twenty and twenty-five thousand pounds of food a month moves to my food shelf building. The other reason was because a very small percentage of my clientele were actually from Sheldon. Way back in the early days, it was barely ten percent of the people we serve were people from Sheldon. And so I felt reluctant to come to Sheldon and ask for money, that ninety percent of us wanted people not in our town. That number still isn't very high, it's still really only about twenty percent. But put it in perspective, about a million dollars a year worth of food. Twenty percent of that is two hundred thousand dollars worth of food comes into this community because of all the food at the food shop, which is a pretty good return on, on a little bit of investment from the town. The other thing, two other things, so since we built our new building, we have the new building, it was built in twenty twenty and that building costs, before we were operating based in the church, they had almost nothing for building expenses. Now we have significant building expenses. Just the freezers and coolers, we have our electric bill runs about four hundred fifty dollars a month now to run that building. So the building expenses have added to our budget in addition to being able to get more food. Right this moment, no one knows what's gonna happen with all of the federal nutrition programs and I want to go through, there's a long laundry list, alphabet soup of nutrition programs. And we have no idea what's gonna happen with those and how that might affect people coming to us for food or our ability to get our hands on food, could be very serious. And the other thing, I want to make sure the town understands that that building is really a community asset. It is available for use by any organization right now, the Girl Scouts meet every Tuesday night. The Girl Scouts use the building for their Girl Scout meeting. The building is available for any organization that wants to have a public meeting or any individuals, any families, you need to have a private, if you need to have a space bigger than your house for a private meeting, the building is available. We have tables and chairs for a hundred, there's not enough room because of all the food in there right now, there's not enough room for a hundred. But you could easily sit sixty or seventy and it has a commercial quality kitchen, basically the same kitchen that you have right here in the school building is available to use. So if anybody has any other questions, or they might be interested in questions, maybe they haven't been thought of in the show operation. That's why we felt that this year, we really needed to ask the town for the money to help us. Just make sure we keep the, make sure we keep the food, the food cool. I had a call from refrigeration guy last night, I have a, I have a eight by ten freezer that has probably thirty, forty thousand dollars worth of food and then the temperature was up to twenty-two and running, but he got it fixed.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that, and I would do. Do we have any other discussion on article seven, the general highway fund operating expenses? In the back?
I was, I was just wondering, like, is there a list of programs we're giving, we're helping out with the community? Like I know, you know, the food shelves and I didn't know it had been listed in the past and I didn't know there was a list available.
So, so we don't have this available, there's a meeting, so there is a list of, they are, the food shelf available organization that was added to that list that has been approved in the past. As I mentioned in the budget proposal last year, Franklin County Food Field Day has asked for an appropriation and the town voted separately on that. This year they did not ask us for appropriation, they did not push to do that request. So essentially the food shelves request is the only new charitable organization. I don't have the list of charitable organizations that have approved in the past, but.
I have a couple of examples.
Okay, right.
A twelve was one of them, there's like ten or twelve, A twelve, it's not B and A, it's B and A. Greenup Day was one of them, Franklin County. Lanes, the lane restoration, you think, it's like as well, I have it at the office.
So the B and A did make it?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions, again?
Could I ask how much they're asking for?
Actually, the question is how much the food shelf is asking for?
We asked for three thousand, we asked for three thousand. So again, what the town has been doing for a number of years now is including, years ago, we used to vote all of these appropriations separately in the article, I'm sure many of you remember that. And eventually the select board decided to just include it in the budget and set a specific amount of tax money and then the money is distributed to the organizations who requested in proportion to the amount of their request. Okay, so I don't have the math for you on, on that this year, but the food shelf requested something like three thousand dollars. They are probably not gonna receive that amount from the town, they would receive a certain percentage of it because I'm sure the amount that is totally requested is not, is less, is more than the amount that the town has decided to budget for charitable organizations also yet. So I'm sorry I don't have those figures today, but we can get those for you.
I mean, it's still nice to vote when we're voting on something, like those little things. Like for me, I used to like, I remember those things, you vote on the money, you know, the money. I think it's really good for the community to know elsewhere that money is going and how it's supporting our community.
Well, we can certainly endeavor to include that information in the report next year and I'll try to fix that.
Thank you.
Do you raise the percentage of the food, food shelf shares in the local, or the percentage of the other? So they can get their?
The question was if we can increase the percentage of going to the food shelf, decrease the percentage going elsewhere.
Because the food shelf is local right here, you know? Certainly doesn't. Now that's one bit more need to the other.
Right. I guess the, I'm not sure if that's necessarily something we need to vote on in this meeting with the select board and consider that when they're distributing the food. So I suppose if I could informally ask for a show of hands, would people like to see the select board distribute proportionally more to the food shelf because it is a local institution? Did you manage to support that?
Is it where it'd be nice if we could vote on them?
Oh, you can't vote on them, so it's worse.
No, I mean, for me, if I saw and see we're giving what organization we're supporting, so if we wanted to adjust. John asked for three thousand, you're saying they're not gonna get three thousand, that's where if you listed, yes, I understand it, it makes it a little bit longer, but we should be able to have a say in where, which organizations and how much our tax dollars are going to.
Yeah, any? Do we have any other discussion on article seven? Any other questions? All right, if we, discussion is closed, we will move to a vote on article seven. All those in favor of accepting article seven, which will allow, will authorize total expenditures for general highway fund operating expenses of one million eight hundred one thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. And article seven is passed. Article eight, shall the voters authorize an expense not to exceed eighty-nine thousand dollars from the remaining federal funds to be used for the initial payment on a lease agreement for a new prior engine? Does anyone wish to move this article? Do we have a second? Seconded, all right. Is there any discussion on article eight? Abby?
I was doing the federal funds for the remaining balance of the ARPA money. And I know you went through the list last year, but I'm not able to find it here, where did the rest of the ARPA money go?
Where's the rest of the, um?
Yeah, there's nothing in here saying we have any twenty-four or not, but I can find it, where's the ARPA money?
So Abby, in, in the report, it's listed on page forty-three, under other funds. Part of that's because as a semantic argument, this isn't truly ARPA money. Okay, so when, during the pandemic, my understanding is during the pandemic, the town received money underneath American Rescue Plan Act, which is what ARPA's asked for. The town decided to use that money to meet payroll expenses at that time. And so in doing so, it deferred money that it would have been using to pay those expenses. And so we sort of had a residual balance of town money that wasn't used for payroll during the pandemic that has been put into this other funds, right? So we, we've been calling it ARPA money for the last two or three town meetings here and it was listed in the book as ARPA funds, but that's not technically correct because it's not, this money is not restricted in terms of what the town could spend it on by the American Rescue Plan Act. As I'm sure other towns, the spending story is that certain towns have, you need to spend it by a certain date and it can only be spent on certain things. Because of the way the town decided to meet those obligations during the pandemic, these, these funds are somewhat unrestricted in terms of how the town could use them. So that's why they're listed as other funds instead of ARPA money. But that is semantically what we've been calling it for the last few years, so you're saying, so what is listed under other funds is what that money, that is the money.
The twenty-four thousand that says historical society, that's out of the ARPA money?
Yeah.
And I guess I have a question on why did we have to use, did we not have money to cover payroll? Or why are we using funds, federal funds to cover payroll that otherwise would have been voted on in the past rate?
They have money, but they changed the rules, is the ARPA?
Yeah, I, I know what.
It could be spent on payroll, so instead of, of finding things to spend the money on, we diverted it over to this other fund that we can spend it wherever we want to spend it. On any, like the historical society got some money, they, we did the heat of the cold cupboard, that had some money. that had some money from the ARPA funds. And now we have this remaining balance that can be spent. And I believe they're looking at a sewer project, maybe in Shelvin Springs, that's going to use some of these funds. The fire truck's going to be using some of these funds.
How, how much is this, meaning I don't know if this is a balance of ARPA money?
No.
Right, or do we have to see what that's worth?
No.
So you see on page forty-three, under other funds, it says total asset. Right? That is, that, that's what's written in the total fund. All right, so we are proving, we are asking for to use eighty-nine thousand dollars from that balance for this purpose.
Are there questions?
This is above and beyond what's already been budgeted in the budget.
The eighty-nine thousand separate part, you're speaking, referencing the, the funds in Article Seven that was approved?
Correct.
Correct. So is this eighty-nine thousand separate?
Yes.
So on page thirty-six, we budgeted eighty-six thousand, so we're going to add eighty-nine to that.
That is correct. Yes. So the, okay, so, yes, so on page thirty-six, uh, on the line, uh, not thirty-six, on page five, page thirty-six, uh, line, the third line under fire department, it says fire department money to equipment fund. We budgeted eighty-six thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars there. So the, the fifty-two thousand eight hundred twenty dollars that we spent last year, that is a payment on the fire engine that we have already been making payments on. Okay, so this is a second fire engine that we'll start making payments on. We asked to include, so what the fire department asked this year, and was being, was explained in the budget highlights, they asked to increase the line item for the equipment fund by the more or less amount of money that had been going to the fire department building loan. Okay? That building loan is now paid off, right? So they just added, or asked for an increase to that equipment fund in part to plan for future expenses on this fire engine that we are now acquiring. Okay? But we are, in this meeting, the questions being asked is for the first payment on this fire truck, we would like to use the eighty-nine thousand dollars from this other fund that the town has. So it is not from the budget, it is from this fund that the town has. Okay, so this approval for the fire department will not, for the first payment will not add to the budget any further today. Okay?
What is the cost of the fire truck?
Five hundred eighty-five thousand.
The total cost of the fire truck is five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So there's a provision in the law that if the town enters into a lease agreement or a piece of equipment, it can finance that as long as, it can do that as long as each annual payment is approved by the town. Okay? And it can do that through the budget, it can, the town can approve through the budget vote, or it can approve as a separate article. Because we want to use money that is not in the general budget, but coming from this fund that the town has, we ask that question as a separate article this year.
How many years is left on this fire truck that we're paying for?
Uh, the current fire truck is on, uh, it's on, under the long term and short term, it's payable. There is one payment left on the fire truck.
So the eighty-nine thousand is not a payment on that truck?
No, this is a, this is.
This is a different payment that you want.
So I forgot, we've been paying money on this, on the fire truck that we are currently making payments on. We have been making payments for several years. There's one payment left, or, sorry, there's two main payments left. So there's one payment this year, another payment next year. Fire department is also, has ordered another fire engine that is coming this summer. This eighty-nine thousand dollars is to be the first payment on that fire truck. Okay, so we're going to make two payments this year on fire trucks. One's coming out of the budget, or coming out of the fire department equipment fund and being transferred in from the budget. The other is off the budget and coming from the so-called ARPA money that we have.
Without respect to factory capital.
Do you have any other questions on Article Eight? Here is no other discussion. We will move to a vote on Article Eight. All those in favor of accepting Article Eight, please, this means you do want to authorize the town to make payment of eighty-nine thousand for the new fire engine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed today? The ayes appear to have it and Article Eight has passed. Article Nine, shall the voters authorize the construction of a new self-storage facility on the town grounds property at a total expense not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars to be financed over a period not to exceed five years? Seconded, excellent. Is there any discussion on Article Nine?
How, how big is this shed going to be when it's an engineer?
This, with this money that we have asked for, it will be twenty by forty and the engineering teams are included into this not to exceed number.
Is everybody able to hear that? Okay. Other questions on Article Nine in the center?
I just don't understand why we need to do one.
And you've not looked at the current one. It's only sixteen by twenty and it's collapsing on it right now until nineteen eighty-one and serve its purpose. The walls are not in good shape, they're not in good shape.
Do we, do we have the engineered plan?
Not yet. We don't have the money to spend on engineered plan yet, so we put some numbers together to see if there's something the voters wanted to approve. Once it, once, if it is approved or not approved, then why spend the money on an engineer if we're not going to build it? That was our thought. That's where we're at. We're looking to see what, what the voters want to do with it. If they want to do salt cheddar or they don't think we need one.
Up here in here.
So one hundred thousand dollars for five years, or twenty thousand dollars a year, less than one penny on the tax rate?
Opposed.
I mean, you hardly want to see any increase at all.
We would hope to build it for less than a hundred thousand. We just, we, we put that number in there. We're quite comfortable with building it for less than a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Well, uh, we'll have a concrete wall.
Concrete bottom.
Six, yeah, it'd be concrete, uh, built like a bunker with a wooden, with a wood top.
What'd it be better than?
What's that?
What'd it be better than, blacktop bottom?
Possibly, yeah, because layer of soil.
That's right. I would concern about, I would, I've thought about it. There's a little concern, I have a concern about the concrete and the salt and what we might go back with before we put the salt in. We all know what concrete does, or salt does to concrete. It's like oil.
Two towns on covering the cement pile. Salts have covered.
One, one thing at a time. Covering the cement pile.
Well, I don't know. Some of the towns have grants.
Possibly.
Do you have any additional questions regarding Article Nine? All right, Seaman, we will move to a vote on Article Nine. All those in favor of accepting Article Nine and approving a total expense not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars to be financed over a period not to exceed five years. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it. And Article Nine is passed. All right, and Article Ten, shall the author, excuse me, shall the voters authorize the select floor to convey the eleven point four acre parcel on which the Sheldon Elementary School is located to the Northern Mountain Valley Union United School District as described in the memorandum of understanding between the town and school district? Does anyone wish to move this article? Do we have a second? Thank you, Abby. Discussion is open on Article Ten. Again?
I was just curious, if you vote on page five in the memorandum of understanding, um, it says that Northern Mountain Valley in point five, the Northern Mountain Valley Union United School District will ensure that the public retains access to the recreational people when not used by the school. My concern was that it didn't mention the community forest in there.
I can't hear you in the back, you get the microphone. Sorry. People are waving me down the back.
So on page five. On page five, number five says, the Northern Mountain Valley Union United School District will ensure that the public retains access to the rec fields when not used by the school. But I noticed that it doesn't mention the forest. And I know in years past, my husband has been part of the forest committee here at school when we were in with another district. And at one point, they wanted to use the forest to pace the siding of the building. And I just want to make sure that that, that our, that our community forest is open for the community all the time. I know that my entire family and others use it, you know, for walks and hikes. I, it just made me nervous that it mentioned the rec fields, but it didn't mention the community forest.
On that question, right, that, um, the land of the community forest is in a separate parcel. That's over on the other side of the road. That was never part of the town's property. The town's property was all of this, where the school sits, rec fields, it's a eleven acre parcel. It was, it's been a matter of confusion on who owns what and who takes care of what, the fence and the mowing the lawns and maintenance and stuff. And so what the school is looking at right now is to change their access or, I mean, we've been talking about this for thirty years, parking lot dangerous, four farm road coming down through the parking lot, this and that. Well, the latest plan that they have come up with is they would like to change the inflow for traffic for drop off and pickup. And part of that tail is going on to the property that the, you know, the town owns, the rec field, um, to make it easier for that. They've been maintaining mowing and stuff and, and so we just thought it would be easier just to, to claim it over to the school. They agreed that everything's going to pretty much stay the same as far as access and public use. And I mean, we just put the blacktop on the basketball court. We just put the blacktop on basketball court last summer. And so it's just one of those things that we're trying to get cleaned up for them to move forward with the parking issue, the drop off and the bumper. And we looked at it, it's, well, if they do it this way and it works and it would save the town money moving four farm road. We, we've offered to do that. One of the last times we met with them, we said, you know, maybe we could move four farm road down over the hill and fix your parking. But their plan is the lower parking lot, they want to expand that a little bit, maybe make it safer for people and reconfigure the way traffic goes in and out of the school here. So other than that, I don't think, you know, we're going to see any changes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the reason we're looking at this.
Questions in the back? Can you hear?
To elaborate a little bit on what Steve said, I know there's a lot gray area following Act Forty-Six about who owns what here. And it feels like we already lost control of our school, you know? We had our own school board, they grouped us together. You come here, you vote on the school board, I bet that nobody here knows any of the names of them, or very few. And so I don't know what control we still have over this property, but looking forward with Governor Scott's education report plan and looking at going to five districts in the state, lumping us with Chittenden County, what more, how much more control do we lose over the say of this school and our community? Because if we hand it over to Northern Mountain, and they get rolled into this new district that is now Chittenden County, and there's five people to represent our community in Chittenden County, and I think it includes Grand Isle County? Do those five people really have a voice that is what Sheldon wants? I don't know. Much just, I'm just bringing it up because this has just come out and I know this has already been on the morning for a while, but with this new plan coming out, it's like, I don't know.
Hi, I'm Emily Norris. I, I'm on your school board. I've been on for. My name is Emily Norris. I'm on your school board. It's one of the two, Sheldon, Rex, myself, Edwina Johnson. I've been on about eight years. I agree with your point that there is some concern around what will happen. I know that that article has been on our town meeting for a while. I don't feel there would be any harm in pushing it down the road to make a decision until we have more firm grasp on what's going to happen. To your point about being helped in with several districts, I think there's too much unknown. So as a school board member, I think that's not wrong.
Thank you, Ellen. All right. You have the mic from right there.
Nancy West, I'm asking a little harder about the number one on the, okay, it says, the use of the school building for public meetings, annual receptions. My big question is to you, what about the library craft show that they do here? They've helped for a hundred years. It's a big part of our community. We have a lot of local vendors and it's not on this list. That makes me a little nervous because last year they did get a little bit of a runabout happening here because I have, I do work with the library. So my big question is, is there any way we can put on anything in that space about the library craft show that they've done for such a long time and brought so many community members together and also help money raise for all the library and our programs?
There, there is a policy on F M D S U.
There is a policy on the F M D S U website and it might be on F M D as well regarding to the public use of spaces for schools, what's allowed, what's not. So it's my understanding, and we can reach out to the policy rep and ask you for, but it's my understanding that those things and components are still going to be intertwined. Everybody recognizes that the school is truly, especially the community like ours, the heart of our community and so we can go on here. So we, I agree with the policy, but it's my understanding that those sets will be allowed to continue.
In the back?
I just want some clarification on, like, what is it now? What does it stand? What plans are we talking about? Like, are we talking about giving it to them or like, is the property out here but not in order or not in order?
I just for clarification, I know we're talking about.
All right, so this is where, as Steve said, this has been on for thirty years, who owns what. So I'll tell you by deed, the entire parcel on this side of four farm road between here and school street belongs to the town show. All right, it was deeded to the town.
Alright, it was deeded to the town by the mill in the nineteen seventies for the purpose of building this school here. Okay? Uh, and so, that, you wanna go back and look at the nineteen seventy-two town meeting, that's what they're talking about. Okay, uh, so, the, uh, so, by deed, the town owns this entire parcel. The other side of the road was given to the school by the mill in nineteen ninety-six. Okay, so the eighty-six acres or whatever of the town, of the built community forest, that belongs to the school board, or, excuse me, to the Northern Mountain Valley Union, uh, School District now. Now, in the nineteen, I think in nineteen eighty-six, the town received a grant to build the rec fields out here. When it did that, there was a subdivision plot prepared, which proposed a subdivision between the town and the school of this parcel. With the town keeping the rec fields and the ball, and the ball courts over here, and the school retaining the property immediately around the school. So essentially where this access road goes around the school, kind of imagine that as the dividing line of that parcel. Okay, now I say that was a proposed subdivision. It was recorded at the town clerk's office, but there's no deed that, you know, formalizes that arrangement. But that proposal on paper has essentially informed what has happened over the last thirty years. The town would mow the ball fields and, you know, put dirt on the ball fields and pay the basketball court occasionally, and the school would take care of the grounds immediately around the school. Again, that kinda didn't matter whose diamond that was on when the school board and the town were essentially talking to the same voters and getting budget from the same voters. But now, obviously, the situation's changed since the school board is now, uh, the school district is now several towns together and, um, the situation in Sheldon is different than it is in most other towns. The school district owns the land that the school is on. And so, it kind of makes sense for Sheldon to be in line with them, because otherwise it's like the town might be subsidizing the school board in terms of the maintenance of this building. Um, so that is, so by deed again, it belongs to the town. By arrangement, it's essentially been between the town and the school board. Uh, I wanna discuss a point that was raised earlier about, it, it's hard to tell what's gonna happen with the future of schools in Vermont and the school, future of this building. Okay, so, I, my personal opinion, I think Sheldon's the largest school in the district right now, so that's a good thing for Sheldon, I think we'll continue to have a school here. As I mentioned, the school, the land is given to the town for the purpose of putting the school here, and it's been a school here for fifty years, so, um, it would seem, you know, in keeping the lead that we're gonna continue to have the school here. It's really the issue for the town is who's maintaining this property and how is that fair to the voters of the town and the school district? And also, again, with this ambiguity about who own, if the town owns the land, but the school operates the school. For example, um, you know, if someone gets injured, there are groups, general liability policies that follow on. That's, that's a matter of question, we wanted to clarify those things, so. And also, again, the situation with the parking and the traffic, it makes sense to have one entity decide about the, the, um, how that is arranged, if it makes more sense for the school, who operates the building on a daily basis, to make those decisions about how it wants to operate without necessarily having to go to the town to approve them. So that is why, uh, the select board thought it would be a better idea to propose this transfer of the land. Um, so, in terms of the future of the school, it's really difficult to say what the legislature and governor are gonna do. Um, I think, the way it is, in my personal opinion, I think there's gonna continue to be school here and it would be better for the school district to take care of, like, this parcel and for the town to avoid any position they know. Again, as the memorandum says, we plan to continue cooperating with the school on a voluntary basis for, for different things, but in terms of having the town be obligated by this property, I think it'd be better to have that transferred to the school.
And that would be like, like, what we're talking about is basically giving them, uh, like, whatever they want?
Correct.
I guess I kinda feel like Hasbun said that, like, this is something we can just kinda shell for now, 'cause there is so much unknown.
Alright, we have, like, you're-
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Tom, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Can you come up here with this?
Yeah, I can, I can come up and take this further if you need to.
My phone.
Um, so, if you'd like to be a friend of mine here, so you're-
I'm gonna get my cheap shoes out.
Hi everyone, I'm Tom Oliver, I'm your representative down in Montclair. Um, I am not on the education committee. I am in judiciary, so we deal with all the statutes, but I do have some basic information regarding the case bill. This is it. It's a hundred and ninety-four pages. Um, and I assume that there's one in the senate as well, this is the House bill, there'd be a senate bill. And what's gonna happen with this is, um, you've all heard what the government's talking about, of the district building and all that. That is really just the idea. It, it is, none of those numbers are, are set in stone whatsoever. In fact, when you hear about districts, I hear a number about it, I haven't done it in a while. Um, I was talking earlier, of fourteen to twelve, probably twelve. Twelve districts and two of them will absorb, two of them real small ones like Grand Isle, and then come into Franklin County, and Essex might go into California County or something. I, I'm not sure how it's gonna end up. Uh, if I told you I do, I'd be lying to you. Uh, but this is all very much in its infancy. Nobody has any idea when it's gonna go into effect. Um, these bills right now, this, this is the administrators' bill, this is basically Governor Scott's bill and minority party's bill. And I'm assuming that the leadership bill, which would be the Democrat Party, also has some options. Um, but from what I'm understanding, nothing's coming off the wall. Um, that scares me more because that means taxes, that's only gonna probably go off. So, we're trying to get something, we do have to do something, you know this. It's an emergency. Um, but as far as districting goes and what's gonna happen, it is, it, it's only a concept at this point. And we're so late in the session already, and I don't know what will become of it, so. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, I'll try to answer them, go ahead.
Well, I hear, I think even somewhat of this whole thing with the governor, governor, uh, this is not gonna happen, like you said, over the next, this is a five to ten year out the window car, so it's not like, but this is gonna change over the next couple of years. Could be five, could be ten, who knows really how long.
We have that possession a lot, they're, they're still gonna try to make it happen as fast as possible, ten years, and it's too far. Yeah, but right.
It's, it's, it's a huge undertaking here.
Just got a question, just, uh, I'm gonna have to take you to the microphone. Why wouldn't you see anything self-owned in Chittenden? When you have it in your hand here now? Notwithstanding all the question marks that everybody have brought here, and then you yourself, Tom, have said, you know, this, this isn't even a blueprint. Right now, it's just a thought, yeah?
It, it is a blueprint, if that happens, it's gonna come up here, and every time, you know, every fire has been committed, this thing is gonna get completely, totally reelected over and over and over and over again. It probably won't even look the same in the other way, but it's, we don't know. Uh, so, if, 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 there's no clue, go ahead.
So, not really a question, but I guess maybe further by going a little further, a couple of things. Like Nancy mentioned, you know, it doesn't explicitly in here say that the library can use it for their craft show, and she already had some pushback, maybe they have a policy, I don't know. But, as it stands right now, we wouldn't list these items right here unless we thought we had them somehow to allow these things to happen. So when we hand this over to them, we quit claiming, we no longer can say we wanna use it for the craft show, that we wanna use it for anything else. And just because we have an agreement with Northern Mountain Valley, doesn't mean that when the redistricting happens, that maybe it's just like it got taken away from us for forty-six and put into a group pot, and we lost control. Now they're gonna take Northern Mountain Valley and they're gonna stick them in whatever new district they need. Maybe it has Chittenden County, maybe it's just Grand Isle County, get it where, doesn't matter. At that point, we no longer have this say.
Well, okay, so, thanks for your question. You reached over earlier, something I was saying, like, in a lot of structures, differently, but it's the same, it's just names slightly different. Instead of having a school board within, within this school, you'll have an minority camp. That minority camp will take the district and be part of that, give that house on. And, we, we, we do realize that communities still have to obtain their own individuality and be able to do their own thing. And still yet, be able to, you know, pull off this big plan where it's all a, a much larger, larger, like corporation, trust me, I get it. Does that make sense?
This is a rudimentary question, but is transferring the deed of eleven acres going to affect the valuation of the town as far as access?
Uh, that's a good question, I don't know. I don't think so. So, it's already- Yeah, we already, yeah. Whether it's part of the school or part of the valley.
You're not sure where you're at?
Oh, sorry.
Um, I just wonder why? Um, why, just because a school is part of a district, why does that school own, owns it by the district? That doesn't make sense to me. It should be owned by the town. So how, how-
Basically, it works like that, now, I wanna know if it worked pretty well. Um, and we've been solidified and, and it's governing it much.
Well, I think it's a good idea that, I mean, we don't, you know, like, you go to other states, um, you know, they have huge school districts, because I, you know, why do we need, um, I don't know how many school districts I have, but, you know, those superintendents sit behind the desk and make, you know, we don't need so many of them, so I, I don't, you know, I think fourteen or twelve districts and, and save them out would be great, but I don't agree with giving the, the town owned by the school, yeah, I don't believe that the school should be owned by that district. It should be owned by the town.
Right, I, I can only go back and, and represent you guys what you want, and I feel pretty much the same way you do as well. Um, we, we just have to watch out for our own interests. Um, but right now, there's, what, a hundred and nineteen districts and fifty-some odd supervisory unions? Um, and when they're all spending monies that are out of control, the only thing, without any control, the only thing we can fix it is taxes. Um, and that's why I-
So, we have the superintendents, we don't need that thing.
Well, that's what we're doing. So, back to Article Ten. Um, we already own the school. We're just talking about the eleven acres out here that- Right. Town currently owns. Back to Article Ten. What's the, go ahead. You asked a question. The role, what's the timeline the board has for the, uh, the road improvements out there?
I'm not sure, that would be of the Morgan Daybell, um, Ted question, Kurt Oliver, they can speak to the plan and-
They, they don't have a, I mean, you don't know of any timeline where they-
I don't, have they been-
So that would be a-
Have they had your meetings?
No, I just, it's just, it's something they're gonna monitor, borrow money, you have-
I'm not, I cannot speak to any of that, that's a Morgan Daybell, um, Kurt Oliver, uh, conversation, um, or her, who knows, please, and I think, they've had your meetings, correct? You've had a meeting.
But a lot of that, so, some of that is, the approvals that you want to do out here, would happen a lot quicker if it's not going through two boards.
Correct.
That's-
I do just wanna, and I, I just wanna say, this conversation has gone on, um, when it comes to Northern Mountain Valley, and yes, we are made of, of several districts with community members from several different boards, I can honestly say that the other board members from the other towns genuinely care about Sheldon School. We have a very cohesive group of people who are working hard, the whole notion of all of our schools, or all of our schools has been something that we've all really adopted as the N M V board. So, I just wanna make sure that people understand that it's not Sheldon against all the other town. We've worked really, really hard to make sure that we work in tandem and unison, and that we care about all our kids across the district and the schools. If this whole notion of, um, reforming the, the education, the state ver law wasn't on the table, I do understand where it would be absolutely so much more clean, efficient, clear around conveying this land to N M V, because it belongs with the school. You know, it, it would make sense, we're the, you know, the school, they're the ones mowing it, taking care of it. It belongs with the school, and if you look, I would assume, across the state ver law, you're gonna find that the land in which schools are on and operating is owned by the school. To Matt's point, I think it definitely makes things a little bit carry. Um, I just personally, um, do have some concern because there is so much unknown, but I, my concern here, the unknown shouldn't necessarily, um, impede on a decision that makes more sense for, for the town and the school district to, um, be efficient how they operate and manage that land. Um, so, eventually, things will change for our school, uh, for our district. I don't know when, um, but I, I can say that being on the bottom barrel in terms of what we spend on our kids, we are like twelfth or below in the state of Vermont, um, I'm ready for a change, I don't know if I agree with everything in that massive novel that, um, Mr. Oliver shared, but as a parent, um, and as a board member and a community member, we have to do something different for our taxpayers and for our kids, because our kids don't have access to the things that kids in Chittenden County have, or Stowe, or any of these higher spending districts, so I'm, I'm hopeful that it will allow our kids to have access to them.
Emily? Sorry, sorry, I'm gonna try to go over here, Abby?
I, I appreciate everything that everyone is saying, and I agree with pretty much all of it. I feel like this document here is very rushed, and I don't feel like it really protects the town of Sheldon, or even to some degree protects our kids entirely. Because I don't know, how many of you have kids here, but these rec fields are used constantly, and if you're talking about taking them over for parking and reconfiguring, you've got over four hundred kids here that, you can shake your head no, but I know that's been one of the plans that's been talked about, but I do think that this is way too rushed, we don't have enough information from the school district to be able, in my opinion, to make really, this is a couple bullet points, but you're talking about handing over eleven and a half acres and to other people's point, losing any say or control to protect our kids to have access. Yes, as a parent, this parking lot is awful, especially you have a school event, I mean, what did they say, the concert, there was five hundred people here for a kid's concert packed into this gym. Yes, absolutely, I hundred percent agree, something needs to happen, and Steve's not exaggerating on thirty years that this has been in discussion and in the works, but one way or the other, we're gonna pay for it, whether we're paying out of our town tax or we're paying out of the school tax, but I just feel like this document is way too vague and way too rushed for us to just hand over eleven and a half acres and lose control. You're saying it's this side, but it is also down below where the nature center is, maybe it doesn't, I know the town forest is a separate deed, because I've asked Matt this question before, but those rec fields down there and that nature center is detrimental to the school, so I think we really need to be careful without having any plan or concrete evidence as to what's going to happen.
Thank you, Abby. Um, Emily, will you guys, for any-
The follow-up, like Matt, who's our question or answer? Right, this is the priority we're gonna give them, but does it get passed on? Who does that, when it changes hands again? And to me, it's like, when you give your land away, you're not gonna get it back.
Emily? So I just, I'm, thank you for your concern as a parent. Remember, regarding the fields, my kids also play sports, I mean, we coach together, we're out there all the time, so I fully hear your concern. Um, there are very thoughtful plans that have been discussed and placed with engineers, uh, cross consulting, or oh, since I came on the board, this has been ongoing, it's an issue of, of money. Um, no one intends to take these fields over and pave them and say, you know, kids, you can't have this anymore. That is absolutely not the intention, and those of us on the school board, or if you wanna go to a meeting to talk about that, your families about that, but that has never been the intention, um, of anyone on the board. And at the end of the day, it's, it's our say and our vote, um, as to what happens, um, to the, the school property.
If there are any, any, any meetings on any of that, I would like to try, I mean- No, this is not directed at you at all, Abby, but I don't feel our S T U is very forthcoming for any information.
You have two words.
I, yeah, no, I understand that, but-
So, get on our agenda and you will-
So, get on our agenda, and we will talk about absolutely any topic that you want to talk about, and meeting is held once a month, S U board is held once a month, we never have any visitors, ever, others typically one or two people that hop on Zoom, but if you wanna come, to these community members, um, talk about your concerns, because I am just one person on the board, um, and there are a lot of other really educated folks like Morgan Daybell, our, our CFO, he will, Lake Hoda, Vern, um, there's a lot of people that can speak more to the plans and the discussion that's been had, um, over the law call, but I assure you that no one is coming and taking away our soccer fields and our baseball fields. Even on the board, people that work in the school district do it because they care about our kids, that is what we have in common, and I just think we all need to remember that.
Um, Emily, to the back?
Miss Emily, just from this document, as it's proposed here, in your mind, Emily, I'm only asking you for your big, okay? Are there more known unknowns in this document, or are there more known knowns? Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
No, he's done it now.
A known unknown is something that hasn't, you haven't even broached yet, okay? A known known is what you have represented in this document, because it's printed, and as we all know, once something is printed, it stays forever.
Correct.
So, in your mind, weigh the known knowns in this document.
Yep.
If you had to look back and say, I don't know the unknowns between the lines, just like the...
I think...
The cap, you know...
That's a, that's a very difficult question to answer, because I think the unknown unknown is the larger conversation that Tom was just talking about in terms of the big picture of what's gonna happen to education, so I don't feel totally comfortable answering your question, but what I can say is, is if Steve Dodd and Mary Niles drafted this letter in tandem, I would like what's, I'd draft what's...
Thank you. We had, let's see, I'm going in order, you were next there in the back.
So, uh, just to say, I, I find no means I have any beef with you, Emily, or anything of the top, what you guys are doing, everything, you know, honestly, after taking control away from our original school board and bringing it, I feel like we've done a good job of, you know, doing that. And so, does it make sense to, you know, hand them this control? Yeah, it would, if we weren't on the cusp of possible redistricting, and so, just because your board works really well together, and everybody's really considerate of everybody's town, we get grouped in with somebody else, if we get grouped in with Chittenden County, you think we matter? Uh, I really don't.
And, uh, did you have any, did you have a question to your president? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll, of course, yeah. Yep, oh, you're, you're, okay, you have a, um, all the questions, and seconded, all right, so, okay, so, we will now vote with all the questions, all in favor of my question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the question has been called, and we're moved to vote in on article ten. All of you in favor, um, to convey the eleven point four, our paper, acre parcel to Northern Mountain Valley, all in favor, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. If there is no objection, the article has been rejected. Article ten is rejected. Moving on to the last article of the day. Article eleven, to discuss any non, other non-binding business, uh, we will use this as an opportunity to remind everyone, we can discuss anything, but no binding action can be taken, um, without properly being warned. Is there any discussion on article eleven, Brian?
This summer, I asked to get two streetlights put in at the bottom of my street, as that, as that should result.
Yeah, decided not to, if you wanna make the president put the relays on every intersection in town Sheldon.
You think that would be a good safety factor, or that just...
That was just our decision, that if you do it on one street corner, you gotta do it on every street corner.
What was the cost of that?
The country's three mill town, it was, it was, it was loaded out immediately, you know, it was...
To me, as a safety factor, that should be done, that should be done on all the major intersections.
Right, you had a neighbor on the road, and he managed to hit me really close with the relay on that road, so...
That was higher up, on the corner.
You, it is a concern, but other people, it was a concern to put him up there, and decided that, you know, we weren't that present enough, putting these lights all over Sheldon Sheldon. Because if we did it on the corner, if we did it on the corner of Sheldon Heights, one oh five, well, you need to do it on the whole road, one oh five, if you do it on the one oh five, it's what we decided next door.
If you found it safe to light, that'd be worth it.
Maybe, but, you know...
That's an interesting comment you made, save a light.
Been out in this parking lot, school gets out.
All right, let's, um, let me relay the next thing, is there...
Been out in this parking lot, school gets out.
Jeff, do you mind if we, uh, somebody else raised their name on, uh, far left there?
It's a bar pickup spot at the end of Sheldon Heights, where there's school kids, um, who stop morning, midnight, dark, yeah, I don't know, maybe you wanna take that into consideration. That's just my concern, I see a lot of kids there, you know, morning, as far as pedestrians go.
Do you have any other points of discussion for article eleven?
I came to the, I came to the board here after the spring, or whatever, winter, or whatever it was, about the speeding in Sheldon, I, I know you guys talked about the sheriff requirements, that, I mean, I come, this falls, this falls, the other night, I'm in my driveway, I took one step, I did from the village, by my place, they're going fifty plus, they almost hit me by this much, I had to almost jump backwards and lay on the ground. Are we doing anything about the speeding? I mean, twenty-five miles an hour down below pavement rules, twenty-five, but people are going up fifty-plus sometimes, and even faster with the tractor trailers and stuff, cars and everything, I come, real cold from being out here today.
Yeah, we've had, uh, you can hear me on the microphone, I assume?
Everyone here, Nick, okay, or do you need a microphone?
We've, we've had, uh, meetings, you know, as far as the law enforcement coverage right now, we have eight hours a week with the sheriff's department, uh, the cost of it, uh, and if it increased contract based on hours we had before, seemed pretty prohibitive, you know, the, the, the cost per hour went up, something like twenty dollars an hour, which, you know, given the hours we had allocated in the budget, we had like, at the time, thirty, fifty thousand dollars, something like that in the budget allocated for law enforcement, so when you start, you know, charging higher amounts, uh, per hour for patrols, like obviously that cuts into our budget quite a bit, costs go up, and how much we need for law enforcement. And then, of course, there's the options, right? Like, we can't give them on state police, um, that contract, we have spoken with other law enforcement agencies, we spoke with neighboring towns about partnering up, you know, what does that look like on a policing model, what do we have available on for funds, you know, for quota, what are our needs, what are our neighbors' needs, and how can we work together? Um, and where we kind of landed was, you know, right now, we are contracted for eight hours a week, because that's what we're budgeted for, but it's on a six-month contract, and then we'll see what happens as far as when that contract expires, and we get, uh, quotes for how much would it cost to continue under this hour model, how much would it cost for sixteen hours a week, uh, how much would it cost for a full-time officer, but you have to know that as those hours go up, and the costs have increased across the board, that's gonna be an ask that we come back to, for you.
And I fully understand the cost there, but let me ask you this, what is the cost of putting a speed bump up? Because I tell you what, when they're going fifty miles an hour, and they hit that speed bump, they're remembering to slow down that bump, so why don't we put some speed bumps up?
We've had discussions about all sorts of...
I understand you can't do it in the winter time.
Well, that's part of it, we've had discussions about all sorts of ways that we can mitigate, you know, speeding, and we've had discussions about lights, cameras, speed bumps, what's up with the plowing, what's the cost there, what are some of the issues we have with some of those rest speed bump, and does damage their vehicle, but, you know, we've had a lot of discussions on this stuff.
Well, I understand, I, I've been hit twice, twice, coming down my driveway, and totaled my car the first time, and the person backed up, and left, and it was on my insurance.
You know, I, listen, I here, I live on one oh five on the west end, right by Swan, so people that cross, you know, pass each other on the hill, run through my house all the time, and my wife's had to swerve out of the road onto our lawn several times to avoid someone passing someone on that straightaway. So, law enforcement is something, obviously, especially coming from my family, that we, we value, and we've always wanted, it, it just works things where the more we want, the more it's gonna cost, and our options are really good right now.
Appreciate your response.
Yep.
So, last year, we had a big discussion about administrator, and I wanna thank that. Today, just today, the clarity that he has brought, and the voice that he has proposed from the board, it's been money well spent, thank you.
All right, Nick.
Uh, another, you know, something to worry to think about is, if you look at the attendance at town meeting day, you know, there's a lot of things that are prohibitive, you know, just based on the time and date that we meet, so if that's something that the town wants to entertain, moving town meeting day, the time of it to later in the evening to have more, you know, interaction from other community members that may be at work, may not be able to be here, um, you know, maybe able to bring back some of the, you know, except they used to be, have a meal, that's more of a community event as well, because we have a school meeting, a town meeting, um, obviously, you know, the less things that we have to vote on together, or the time of day that is, we might see, you know, the attendance continue to decline, but that's something that we wanted to consider moving the time of town meeting day to later in the evening, um, that's something that the town folks have to start to discuss, or kind of voice what their, you know, have to do.
Nick, it might be interesting to consider, this is a pretty small group, and I've seen weddings at the abbey that are four times the district budget. Um, going to the abbey on a day that people are not driving back Florida with their kids, they can't come to town meeting, and you lose a lot of your voters.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right now, just because it's the open discussion, you know, session on binding business, we wanted to put that there, because I think, Matt?
Why, why is that your thought?
Uh, speaking to the, the amount of attendance, um, today, many parents and families are coming back from their breaks and their vacations that they can't go to work, generally just talking about, um, timing that we can use to increase attendance at the town meeting.
I mean, do we really think that changing it would be beneficial?
You, you raise those people up, man.
I mean, where are the donuts today, I wanna know?
I'm thinking we've done this in the past, we changed it to a Saturday, into an evening, and the attendance did not change very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fair, I mean, I don't know if changing it would be beneficial, uh, like the school or being, like your community, I mean, they don't get many, and in my, in my mind, when you keep something the same every year, like, I went to Florida last week, I'm here, you know, like, you can't fix everything, and I'm not sure that changing it would be beneficial, I mean, I, if it would, that would be awesome, but I'm not sure it would be, but I, I agree with the food, you know, no, but seriously, if...
I agree with the food, that's what you know, talk about, you know, whether it's proper or improper, like, we obviously have to take attention to the fact that attendance is not increasing over time, and usually it's, we have a lot of seats open, or there's an issue that brings more people in, but it's not, you know, we've had, the vote has gone down steadily over years, so the question is, yeah, I mean, Greg's concerned if we move to nighttime, how late it would be right now, given the conversation. Which is a possibility, like, so we don't know, if we don't figure these out, we'll see where people land on it.
But, you know, things like, you know, if we would be able to be in the kitchen and like have a hot lunch, or, you know, that sense of community, I mean, I know it can be people, you know, at church or here or there, it's like, all of a sudden, you got people who are like, man, well, who's cooking, you know, like...
Well, we had, I never had this guy before, I think, I sort of, COVID, COVID was a issue, obviously with food, and then I think the idea, maybe listening to everybody back, whether it was a, a community breakfast or brunch, I don't, what's that? Door, door prizes, right, but it was just, you know, talking about what we're seeing and saying, if there's, if we need to make a change, that would, you know, I'll do that trajectory.
About half the percentage of the tax, if you show up...
Can we get, Derek, I can hear you.
I said, how about half the percentage of the tax, though, if you show up? In town meeting, just...
Gotta have the right carrot.
Emily?
I don't need to be the right, I'm gonna say this.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn the twenty twenty-five, twenty-five meeting, do we have that seconded? If we do, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, thank you very much, folks, for the meeting.